The Vice Mayor will work his way up to the front here. That's quite all right, no, not at all. Coming in from the rain.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your dedication.
Certainly. We will call the February the 6th, 2018, meeting to order and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by invocation from Chapel and Jason Middleton, and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spring, yes. God, we thank you for the gracious rain that you give us today. Father, the breath of life. God, we thank you for your love, God, that Father personally has radically transformed my life. Lord, this evening we just pray for, Father, those who represent our city. Lord, thank you for our mayor, our Board of Aldermen, God, to place them in this sea of authority. So, Lord, we pray tonight that you grant them wisdom, instruction, Father, that, Lord, you lead and guide them in all the, Father, great decisions that they'll have to make. Father, we just, again, we thank for the opportunity to be able to be discussed things of this nature. It's in Jesus' name.
Thank you, everyone, for being with us tonight in this inclement weather. We look forward to working our business here. We've got the next item is to go through the approval of the official agenda, which included the consent items. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, may I recognize?
Vice Mayor, you may.
Mayor, I see this distinguished group of officers here. I would like to, first thing I'd like to recognize, if we could recognize, understand that this is a matter that you'd like to take up tonight to recognize the officers. If we could just do that right after we approve the agenda, that would be great, if we could just do that. I think that we should get them out, that'd be great respect for them. If we can do that, Mayor. The next thing, I'm going with the agenda at the table here. I'm just filtering through this. Mayor, over here on Human Resources, I want to remove item number 3G, request authorization to advertise for a part-time receptionist for the Finance Administration Department. Want to remove that from the consent agenda. And also, under that Human Resource, I want to approve, to remove item number 9, consideration to approve a temporary pay increase for the interim director of Parks and Recreation Department. Now, let me take another quick look over this agenda here and just indulge just one second, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, that completes my request for the agenda.
Okay, do we have any other changes to the agenda? Alderman Sistrunk?
Yes, on item G10, I'd like to have that end at the word "mayor," so it would delete the part that links it to the City Information Technology Services Department.
Okay, any objections to that change, to that consent item?
What change?
It's, Alderman, it is item 10, under G. It says, "Request Authorization to Advertise for a Digital Media Specialist Intern Serving as the Liaison from the Office of the Mayor." Alderman Sistrunk is requesting to remove the part where it shows who it reports to.
Okay.
So, it would just be the mayor's office. Any objections to that? Okay, seeing none, we'll let that stand as requested. Any other consent agenda items or any other agenda items? Yes, Alderman Little?
Mayor, under Board Business, item A, 10A, that's on consent, I'd like to leave it on consent, but I would like to read the motion that's going to accompany that as part of the record.
Okay.
Move approval of the proposed warranty deed between the Starkville Country Club, Inc. and the City of Starkville, Mississippi, accepting the dedication of a portion of Fairway Drive and all of Sand Wedge Drive as described in the proposed deed and depicted on the survey attached to the warranty deed as Exhibit A, on a finding that public interest, convenience, and necessity requires that the territory be accepted as public streets, and on the additional finding that all improvements outlined in the order, in the order of the Board of Aldermen on the minutes from June 20th, 2017, have been performed by persons and/or entities other than the city, and that those persons and/or entities sole expense consistent with design plans approved by the city engineer and to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Okay, and you've got that reduced to writing?
I do.
Okay, and there is no note associated with construction traffic. Did you intend to do that?
The developer, I can add that as part of it. The developer, his full intentions are to use the Port House Road for all construction work.
Okay, all right. We'll add that to the motion. Any objections? Everyone comfortable with that as the motion? Okay, I'll pass that on to City Clerk.
And Mayor, under Department Business, item 2, Planning A, I would like to move that to item A, under Public Hearing, to item A, and then reiterate or relater A to B.
We've got that, we've got that, any objections to that? Moving the Board Business, sorry, it's the Planning Business, item 2A, to, under Public Hearing, making it not item A, and then moving item A down to B for the both public hearings. Okay, seeing no objection?
And one last one, under Mayor's Business, item B, I'd like to remove that from the agenda.
Which number?
Move it from the agenda?
Item 1.
Item 1?
Yes. No such objection?
What number you want?
Oh, this is under Mayor's Business, item B. We had talked about it in the work session to, okay, have another work session, and I was hoping that what we would do for that item was adopt a date for a work session.
I had just sensed from talking that Friday with everyone at the table that there was no sense of urgency, the move to continue with the work sessions and then call for a public hearing once the board was comfortable, if they got comfortable.
Okay, well, I was just going to use that agenda item to ask if the board would be available for another work session, but if you'd like to remove from the agenda, do we have any?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and echo that. That was my understanding on Friday, was that we would remove the consideration for a public hearing until we had another work session, was my understanding of that.
All right, any other discussion? All right, we'll remove that one, remove that one from the agenda. Okay, any further changes? Alderman?
Mayor, is it Sistrunk, Alderman Sistrunk?
Yes.
Did you ever find where these funds were coming from upon the Human Resource 7 and 9? Did you ever find where their funds were coming from?
Vacant positions.
Where they're coming from?
Vacant positions, that have vacant positions from the first quarter of the year that have not been filled, and we will continue to advertise.
Okay. Okay, any other, any other changes? Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda, we need, I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the consent agenda items as modified.
Move approval?
I have a motion from Alderman Little, second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have an agenda with a consent agenda. And I'm going to read the consent agenda items at this point in time, so.
Please do.
Item number one is consideration of the minutes of the January 2nd, 2018, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the January 12th, 2018, meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration to place an insert provided by the Actibah County Humane Society, a nonprofit organization in Starkville Utilities, February or March Utility Bills. Consideration of the approval of the proposed warranty deed between the Starkville Country Club, Inc. and the City of Starkville, Mississippi, accepting the dedication of a portion of Fairway Drive and all of Sand Wedge Drive, to include the motion that was read by Alderman Little, is the end of the record. Consideration of appointing Mr. H. Russell Rogers to the Municipal Airport Board to fill a vacant slot, which expired on December 31st, 2017, for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2020. Under code enforcement, consideration that the city hold a public hearing pursuant to Mississippi Code annotated 211911 during its regular meeting on March 6th, 2018, with notice to be provided pursuant to the statute for the purpose of determining whether parcels 118A-00-033.00, is in such a state of uncleanliness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Under Engineering, request approval to transfer a 1994 Ford F-150 VIN number 1FTDF15Y0ORNA08538 from Starkville Utility Department to the Starkville Street Department. Consideration of approval of travel for Deputy Clerks LaShonda Wilson, LeAnn McGar, and Jamaica Smith to the Deputy Clerk Training with Advanced Travel. Request, Fire Department requests permission to accept a Homeland Security Grant for the amount of $18,054 to purchase a 2018 Polaris 900 Crew and MedLite Transport Deluxe to be used at public events in the city and MSU football games with no cost to the city. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to hire Nathan Flippo as a water operator in the Starkville Utilities Department under the Drinking Water Division. Number two is request authorization to hire Nelson McGow as an intern for the Starkville Utilities Department. Number four is request authorization to hire Rivas Kellum, Kendall Jones, and George Thompson as part-time certified firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department. Request authorization to hire Elliot Johnson and DeMaurice Ewing as certified firefighters, and to hire Garrett Heaton as temporary full-time certified firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Number six is request authorization to advertise for a radio operator dispatcher in the Starkville Police Department. Number seven, request authorization to advertise for a civil engineer co-op for the Engineering Department. Eight is request authorization to advertise for two maintenance workers in the Starkville Street Department. Number 10 is request authorization to advertise for a digital media specialist intern serving as the liaison from the office of the mayor. Number 11, request authorization to advertise for a digital media communications specialist intern for Starkville Utilities. Under Parks, we have request approval of Parks and Recreation Concessions Agreement, which Fred Tate, the sole bidder, in the amount of $1,100. Request consideration of approval of a playground project at J.L. King Park from Bliss Products, Inc., at a total cost of $42,850.34, lower of two quotes received, to be paid from 2% tax funds. Number three, approval of updated facility rental from, form includes an amended policy, item number 21, specifying rentals during park hours and concluding at 10:00 PM unless approved by the Board of Aldermen. Under the Police Department, we have request approval to add four new tasers to the city inventory. Number two is request authorization for Chief R. Frank Nichols to attend the 2018 William B., William R. Bracy Winter CEO Symposium in Birmingham, Alabama, March 22 through 24, 2018, at a cost not to exceed $650 with advanced travel. Number three, request approval to accept the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, in the amount of $21,476.13, which is 100% reimbursable in the area of hotspot policing, overtime for hotspot policing, and equipment. Under Sanitation, number one, request approval to declare 18 items listed as surplus property advertised for sale and sell to the highest bidder. That concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, my pleasure. And then, at the request of, we go into announcements and comments, but at the request of the Vice Mayor, we will start with the police recognition awards. We'll change the scope up a little bit. Chief Nichols, would you like to make your presentation now?
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Board, we're here this evening to present several awards to officers in reference to the Walmart shooting that we had a few weeks ago. I have officers, dispatchers, that stood in the gap for the citizens of Starkville as, of course, we went through a minor crisis. As you can see from the video that went viral on the internet, people were running away from the scene, but what you just see, the officers running toward the scene, to running toward the gentleman that had the gun. So, I think that speaks volumes for the people involved in this, and the first three awards I'd like to give out is called the Medal of Valor. To my recollection, in 25 years, we've never given out this award, so this will be the first time that this award is given out. The next award I'd like to give out is the Police Commendation Award, and this award goes to Sergeant Wesley Cohen. He was one of the first ones to respond after the initial officers. He was one of the ones that rendered first aid, attempted and rendered first aid to the victim in the shooting. Wesley Cohen. These go to the officers that responded with Sergeant Cohen. They weren't needed on the immediate scene, and they went in immediately into the store and started gathering up witnesses and taking down names and coming all the people down who had witnessed this horrific crime. The next award is also Positive Performance. I can't say enough about these two individuals. They've been at the police department longer than I have, you know, and they know it, they're the heartbeat of this police department. If they had have got excited and did something wrong, everything would have went wrong for all the officers, but they kept their calm as well as answering the phone, because I called up there, talked to them, doing this whole thing, and they were just as calm as they could be in still dispatching officers and talking to 911. So, if I could have Ms. Jackie Up and Ms. Frances Ewing, please come to the front.
My Lord.
Absolutely, thank you, Chief, and thank all of you. We so greatly appreciate you, and these are the times when we know it, know it the most. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, before they leave, Chief, will you just go ahead and recognize your other command staff? You've got about three other officers back there we need to get recognized before they leave.
Sure. Okay, I have my two right-hand people, and I say right-hand, one's on the left, one's on the right, Captain Mark Ballard and Captain Troy Outlaw. Also, my Public Information Officer, Officer, well, Corporal Love-Lady, who's always somewhere.
And you get officer rounds there, Chief?
Of course you do. The guy with the sexy motorcycle boots on is officer round.
Thank you all so much for being here, and thank you for your service. All right, we will go, Mr. Logan, would you like to come give your State of the Parks information so that we'll have it on, on record for Facebook and on record for the audience, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. This State of the Parks Initiative is something we've unveiled. The objective is to address current and future parks planning for all park sites within the City of Starkville so that all citizens understand their closest park, included amenities, and all future possibilities, and also, main thing, to have some public input regarding those future possibilities. So, the summary of this is that in an effort to address the state of the parks of the entire City of Starkville, we at the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department are conducting in-person meetings with citizens. In an effort to organize the meetings, we have worked with each alderman to schedule meetings in each ward. Additionally, we plan to survey citizens with paper surveys available at our Parks and Recreation Office located at 405 Lynn Lane, and also for those surveys to be available online through March 1st. So, feedback will be concentrated on the available amenities within the current park system, future amenities that citizens would like to see within their closest park, and other ways their quality of life can be improved. The online survey is currently posted on our website at www.starkvilleparks.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and I have one new employee introduction, and then we will move into Board comments, if there are any. I would like to introduce one more police officer, recently hired Parker Madden, and we want to introduce him to the public. Mr. Madden is from Stillman Valley, Illinois. Prior to joining the Starkville Police Department, Parker worked at the Lost Pizza Company as an assistant manager. He attended Northern Illinois University before transferring to Mississippi State to pursue a degree in environmental studies. In his spare time, Parker enjoys going back to Illinois to spend time with his family and friends. He's a big fan of Mississippi State University and enjoys watching college football, and I'll bet basketball, too, right? We'll convert you, playing sports, fishing, and anything outdoors, and Parker's glad to call Starkville home. Welcome, Parker. Thank you. All right, any Board comments?
Mayor, just to add to what Mr. Logan was saying, each ward will have an input session, and Ward 1's input session will be March, Thursday, March 1st, at 6:00 PM at the Sports Plex, is that correct? So, I know you're doing a good job. I really appreciate you doing this, reaching out, asking for citizen input. I like the proactiveness, and so this has been advertised through Nextdoor, Facebook, any other avenues. I don't know if we're going to put it in the paper or not, but again, Ward 1, if any other aldermen want to list their time, Mr. Logan will be there, and he'll be collecting all the input from the, from the ward, so thank you.
Absolutely, and we'll tweet it out. Those of us who are tweeters in the group will tweet-talk it out, so. Anyone else make comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, Mayor, just a couple of comments tonight. Mayor, I've asked Ms., the pastor of Antioch Missionary Baptist Church, Pastor Mary Carr. Ms. Carr, will you come down for just a moment? Just want to recognize you very briefly. If you're coming down to the podium, I just want to say, as you recall, back some meetings ago, that the Board directed you and your church to clean up the property at the corner of Gillespie and Spring Street, and just want to take this moment to finalize this conversation with you. Certainly would like to greatly and sincerely appreciate you for your leadership and for getting the church looking so aesthetically pleasing, and we not only want to recognize you, but just all those who are involved with the project, including, I think there's an article in the Starkville News just a son year or so ago, talking about some of the members of the First Baptist Church, local businesses, and building supply, and just many others, how they have just strongly supported your church, and that they have not only just worked on the exterior of your church, but have also gone to the interior of your church. So, I just thought it would be just the Christian thing to do, to just get you here tonight and just let you know how much we appreciate Antioch Missionary Baptist Church, and certainly I don't want to speak for the Board, but, you know, I want to say that because you have done a very excellent job. The Mayor commented on that, if I recall, at one of the recent Board meetings, maybe it been the last Board meeting, and, and we just hope, trust, and that you will just continue to be blessed with all of the blessings from God, and that y'all will continue to just minister to the, to the people in this city and to the community. So, again, we want to thank you, and the, I see you have two other persons who accompany you tonight. We appreciate their presence, the inclement weather tonight, but just say, want to say thank you for, for what y'all have done and just making the whole location just look so, so very beautiful, and thank you for everything. Aye, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, no other Board comments?
Mayor, one other thing, why don't you, you said you were going to clap for her, yeah. Mayor, just one final thing, just a housekeeping thing. Mayor, I could, I could get Mr. Ashton up here, but let me just address it with you, Mayor. Just a housekeeping, it's a procedural thing, and you may be getting ready to do this at a future Board meeting. I understand, Mayor, that there's been some type of process or procedure with changing the time periods in which the payroll checks are issued. I just only want to speak to the process. I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm sure that the Board probably is going to approve it, but I just want to make sure that it comes through the Board as a matter of process, because it's a legislative action that needs to be approved by the Board, and the City Attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, that the Mayor has superintending authority only to oversee and implement the policy of the Board. So, anytime we have these type of things done, we need to make sure it comes to the Board. So, Mr. Ashton, would you come down? Let me ask you a quick question on that. You know, we just want to make sure we're within the law at all times. You heard those statements from the Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are there any plans from your department in conjunction with working with your Superior to bring that to the Board?
Yes, sir, I can have it brought to the Board on the next Board meeting, number 20.
Well, before I ask that, were there any plans to bring it?
Yes, sir, actually, I had talked to Ms. Sistrunk earlier in the week, and she had informed me that it needed to come before the Board.
Yeah, and I'm not speaking against it. You know, we've had this discussion very fervently, and I wasn't the one engaging, but it's been discussed very fervently, some prior terms, you know, but anytime, things like that, I just make sure that it comes to the Board, because, you know, with the Board being a legislative body, I'm not speaking against it, but I want to make sure, because the Board, that's our role, and it's just all friendly, good, good, good family living here, but that's all, that's all good. So, you're going to bring it to the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's all I need, Mr. Ashton. Very good, keep the good work, thank you. Aye, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, next we'll go into, assuming no other comments for the Board. We'll go into citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak to any matters related to the city, please come up, and you have three minutes. Mr. Turner, how are you this evening?
Good evening to the Mayor and Board, my name is Abbott, Attorney of Ward 7. To the Mayor, to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
To Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Little, President, or Taylor of the NACP. Our, we want to thank the law enforcement for quick, our response in keeping us safe, and we are hoping that we do not have to relive that again no time soon. But our, just a few things that the citizens would, I mean, wanted me to bring to the attention, and that is, we have homeless people that are, they don't know who to call, and with the cold weather and stuff that we had, they was kind of, you know, at within. And about 10 years ago, I had to get a restraining order with a friend of mine, and with that restraining order, we both still here. And if, if Chief, if Chief don't- And if Chief, if Chief Don't Mind, could he explain to us about what a restraining order is?
Chief, would you like to explain what a restraining order is? Since it's been requested of you, we'll let you do that.
As it pertains, I'm not sure what it, as it pertains, as it pertains to any kind of domestic incident, that's something that the municipal court judge would extend to the victim of that. Otherwise, it's extended through the justice court.
Okay, thank you, Chief. All right, any other citizens' comments? Yes, sir. If you give your name, please?
Yes. I'm Devon Terrence Dorson, I'm the president of the Theta Order, Chapter 5, Beta Sigma. I want to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and the board for your time today, and what I want to talk about is the use of the Sports Plex, and what that means to us here as organizations in Starkville, with that being one of the places where we have, we can hold a lot of people. And I understand at our last event, there was an incident with gunfire and people getting shot with that. We had absolutely nothing to do with that, and we took all precautions with law enforcement and security that we knew how to do. And I would like to thank all you all for letting us use the Sports Plex. But we would like to ask the board to reconsider closing it down at 10, just for the students, that's literally the only place in Starkville that can hold more than 1,000 people. And we had people come from Houston, Louisiana, Jackson, Hattiesburg, and I think that did a lot for the local economy, did a lot for us, and that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mayor, could I ask him a question while he's here?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'll make a statement afterwards.
You reference a situation, how long were y'all there the last time?
There, this past time, we was there.
The very last time you were there?
There from 9 to 12:30.
To 1 o'clock? So you asking us to let you use it again to 1 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Let me just say this. I am of the, I know this is not before us tonight, I'm just gonna go ahead and say 'cause I'm, it was on the consent agenda, this is giving you an opportunity to say what I want to say here, very briefly. And I'm sure if, you know, you put in an official request to the board, it'll probably come back to the board, but I'm not gonna support that. The reason I'm not gonna support it, because this is a public place, a city facility, and if it was up to me, I'd close before 10. You know, we just can't tolerate what reportedly happened down there. I mean, I'm not attributing that to you, but it was used under the name of the sponsorship. So we are a city where we strive to protect the health, safety, and the welfare of our citizens, and our chief of police is doing a good job, maybe in an isolated situation, but we just need to, in my opinion, I'm just speaking for myself, I just want to shed it with this issue down tonight, and when I was informed about this, I was wondering why in the world was it open to 12 o'clock in the first place? I think at 12 o'clock, everybody need to be at home somewhere. They just, in my opinion. So, I mean, this is not hard talk, but it's straight talk. I'm old school, that's why I am what I am now. I got that type of training, no disrespect to you. I mean, and this will help, it'll help young people grow. They need more straight talk a lot of times, and I don't mind giving it, because I got it. But, you know, the board may approve it, but I just had to say that, that was on my heart, because I think this was heard from me by at least one other person after this happened on last weekend. And if it was up to me, I mean, I would shut down much sooner, but I'm living with this 10 o'clock. But I just wanted to say that, so you won't be surprised if you come back, the board may grant it, you know, I don't know, but if so, I'll live whatever the board does. But I, but I wanted to say that to you, so y'all continue to strive and carry out your goals and missions in the best way you can and as safe as you can. But we, you know, we do everything we can do here to keep violence out of our city. We want our city to be safe, we want our Sports Plex to be safe, we want our park to be safe, we want our buildings to be safe, and we don't want any crime here we can avoid that make people come here, live here, come, and make the students feel safe, and make people safe coming to these tournaments, and we know we don't want this type of environment. Shut these places down before 10 if we can, but I'm living with 10, but 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning, at a party at the Sports Plex? Mayor, aye?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm old school, too, but I also remember partying. So let me say, part of this policy is to allow you guys to come back and make a special request for a particular event. There is certainly no guarantee that the board will grant it, but the policy does allow an opportunity for an exception if it's coming before the board for their permission. So we did not totally shut it down, but just to let you, let you know that we have a policy in place now with the board's approval, but it will be at a special request, so, okay? Thank you for coming down, and we appreciate you. Okay, anything else? Any other citizens' comments? Well, your public, your public appearance.
My public appearance, but anybody left that didn't want I want you on 13 minutes.
You want 13 minutes?
Seven.
Okay, all right. Any other, any other citizen comments? All right, seeing none. Ms. Isaac?
Okay.
You can come forward and I'll set the clock for 13 minutes, how about that?
She asked me if I got beer. I told her to bring my beer back so I could share it with y'all, but he'll come out 3 minutes now.
You're on the clock.
No, okay. I came tonight to say, oh, we have something else, you know, this Black History Month. I had to remind everybody in February, Black History Month. I just want my two aldermen to stand at this time, please. Frank, that do, I call him Chief sometime, but you do a good job, I want him to stand, please. All other department managers, black, please stand, it's Black History Month. I would just like to say, sometimes y'all don't get deserved in church that y'all deserve, but may the work I've done speak for me, and this is what I want to say to y'all. May the work y'all done speak for, thank y'all for being around. And then I want everybody else to stand up, like I said, I can't, I can't go away without that. All the other aldermen, I can't help, 'cause they call it Black History now, we're black, I can't help that. But all of the aldermen, and all of the other department heads that may be in the house, y'all standing, we're gonna congratulate y'all, too. Y'all do a good job. That's all I have. Y'all do a good job. I have a few bars of candy, if you see me before you leave, that's what I got to leave, a candy. I would just like to say, I love you sweet to me, so I'd like to give all y'all a piece of candy on the hand plaque.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, and now I'm going on to my other one, I think I got 2 and 1/2 minutes on that one, but anyway, I'm going on to my other presentation. This is to all my aldermen, to the mayor, to the vice mayor, I'll give you that distinct. I would just like to say, it's 2018, I don't have a sidewalk, don't have a city truck coming, I mean, not a city truck, but transportation, we don't have it over there where we live at. I live over in Rosemont, just up the hill. I'm gonna keep on bringing it to you, keep on bringing it to you, we're gonna get something done soon or late on this side of town. We need something on this side of town. Don't tell me nothing about no new Walmart, 'cause we got one Walmart, we're doing good down there. I say we need something on this side of town. We're always talking about liquor. Liquor will get you in problem situations. The young man came, and he wanted to have something. Mississippi State got all kinds of bills, and what do they do? Nothing but come here and take over where we at, you know, in Uptown. Uptown is open till what, 1 o'clock on game nights? Where do these students have to go? That's all I'm saying. You know, I've been a student once, and I loved partying. I promise I partied all the time, but I did, you know, we didn't have quite as bad relationships going on now. We partied, but we had to find a place to party, you know, to party, part, and do this and what we wanted to do. But I would just like to say to each and every one of y'all, do not leave that side of town out, we're still partying. Mississippi State, y'all wanna go down there and, what about Sunset? Think about that, Sunset and out on the road, on where the railroad track and all that is, those are black folk people out there. They need to be brought into the, into the city. Now, I'm just gonna tell you, you can sit there and say, we gonna annex on our, back cow, cowboys, cowbells, or whatever it is, and they gonna have all of the space. You still got blackjack, a center that part of town. We need some, we need something else to have. We do, on annexation. And I would just like to say that go cup, get the go cup again if you want, but I'm glad I live on this side of the town, we don't have to call police all the time, or self-help to be friendly to them. That's all, we don't have that much cram over there. But I just want to say to my two aldermen down there, work hard, I know you do work hard, think about the students, we used to be students, come on now, we used to party. You know, and we, they do need a place to party. I'm not saying stay open all night, but remember, they can drink beer, at their dance place until 1 o'clock, they get, they get their beer. Come on now, don't have me have to have the students to come with me, we have to come up here and force them to march, 'cause I will. I will, I will, but I would just like to say, give what's ours. We vote, and when we vote, we keep it serious, you know. Give what's ours, okay?
Ms. Isaac, do you, have you tried the Mississippi State Paratransit? You know, the Smart Bus System, have you called that and tried that?
24 hours, I call, I have to call them 24 hours for them to come.
Do they send a van and come get you?
So if I want to go to the store, I just have to wait 24 hours and go. You know, I have to sometimes go get medicine at Walmart and do everything, but you know, they give me 24 hours, and that's it. And half the time, they tell me that they have to take the medical people first, and I'm just staying in there.
Yes, ma'am.
But we got to open up something. We need to open up something now. I'm not saying just to call, I got like this, 'cause I used to could do what I needed to walk or whatever, but we do need to know. I have talked to them about it, but it's 24 hours. If every night, 24 hours, they gonna come at me now. They do and have to take me to the doctor, my doctor.
Okay, I was just asking.
They're very nice.
Thank you.
But I'd just like to say, remember, we're over on this side of the town. Attorney Perkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Is gonna be running for another office, and he get that office, y'all don't want me to have to run and be up there and asleep. Okay? I'm not making no threat, but I'm serious, I try to take it lightly and do what I can lightly, but I'm real serious, come on now. 2018, we need to do some improvements, and it need to be on all sides of town, and I thank y'all for y'all's attention.
Yes, ma'am.
And see me for a piece of candy.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Isaac.
I wouldn't either, but he may throw away my food, but he give a beer.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac. All right, we'll move now to first public hearing, and we have reordered that, so the first public hearing is going to be, let me go back here and read where it was.
Under planning.
Yes, under planning. It was the public hearing consideration of CU 18-01, a request for conditional use to allow for an accessory dwelling unit at 1700 South Montgomery in an R1 zone with parcel number 106-23-003.01 with conditions. So we have a public hearing on that matter, and what we'll do, the public hearing is 15 minutes for those who are for and 15 minutes for those who are against, and the, I think Mr. Sanders is going to give us a brief rundown before we begin this, so, Mr. Sanders, if you would like to do that, then I will open it up for the public hearing.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen.
Thank you.
Kane Overstreet is requesting a conditional use to allow an accessory drilling unit to be used in the rear yard of a lot located at 1700 South Montgomery Street. The property is zone R1, and in order to construct an accessory drilling unit, a conditional use is required per City of Starkville permitted in conditional use chart. The applicant has already completed the construction of the accessory drilling without the knowledge of approval of the planning department. The structure was labeled garage on the original planning drawings. At the time of the request, with certificate of occupancy, the building department made the applicant aware of the issue. On January the 9th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the conditional use with two conditions. No rental, no rental of the structure included on game day rentals, and the structure must be separately metered from the main structure. Do you have to answer any questions?
Any questions for the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanders. All right, I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item on the agenda now is an opportunity to do so. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, anyone wishing to speak against this item? Now's the opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak against? All right, seeing no one for either in favor or against, I will close it as a public hearing. Does the board have any comments?
I got a motion. Move approval of CU 18-01 with the following conditions which shall run with the land. Number 1, Mr. Kane Overstreet shall construct and maintain at his sole expense a 10-foot wooden fence of design and quality acceptable to adjoining property owner Sid Salter along with, along the whole length of the Overstreet/Salter property line. 2, any and all rentals in the accessory structure located on the property currently owned by Kane Overstreet shall be limited to tenants age 25 and older. Number 3, any and all city ordinance regarding noise, pets, fireworks, and other nuisances shall be enforced on any rental tenants on the Overstreet property. Number 4, neither Mr. Overstreet nor any future owner shall undergo any construction activities on the property without the proper permits and/or that violate R1 zoning.
Okay, I think I've reduced it right, thank you. All right, I will not read it, but I'll pass it to the city clerk. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Oldman Carter, thank you. I have a motion from, a second from Alderman Carter, any further discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to say that while this was not an ideal situation, I have visited the property, it is a very nicely built property, albeit it was not in accordance with our permitting process, and it was good to see that since the P&amp;Z meeting last, that Mr. Salter and Mr. Overstreet, who are both present here tonight, have been able to work through this and come up with an amicable agreement that they're both happy with.
Okay, well, that's always good when you can work things out. Okay, all right, motion second, I see no further discussion or hearing, further discussion? Alderman Carter.
Just, Mr. Salter, it's good to see you. Good to see you.
Amen.
All in favor of Alderman Little's motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. By a vote of 6 to 1, motion carries. All right, the last public hearing is on the adoptions of, adoption of Sections 1 and 2, the City of Starkville Unified Development Code and a modification to the facade requirements. Brief presentation from the building, or code, code department, the Community Development Department, excuse me.
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Board of Aldermen. The past couple of weeks, I have to really commend Daniel Havlin and the LA Corbin for their work on the development code rewrite, and they have put together Sections 1 and 2 of the Development Code, streamlining various processes such as a unified date for notice, a unified date for appeal. Also, the main additions to the Chapter 2 is the addition of the Architectural Review Committee. Also, they've streamlined the DRC process and also the subdivision process, and I am gonna let Daniel Emblin go over the highlights of Sections 1 and 2.
I'm just gonna kind of quickly run through this, you know, no reason to read all 84 pages.
Thank you.
The Section 1, that's the stuff that the city attorney has already started reviewing, has given me comments back on that. That part, I'm not gonna focus on. Section 2, which is administrative of governing bodies. On 2.11, there was a section added for mayor and board aldermen. This is basically just a brief section saying that they have overall authority, which is already kind of a known, but. 212, Planning and Zoning Commission, we re-formatted this existing section, we established requirements for vacancy and advertisements for those vacancies, and we did a removal of the annual reporting requirement. 2.13, Board of Adjustments and Appeals, another reformatting of an existing section, and the established requirements for vacancies, advertisements for vacancies, and also established term limits. 2.1.4, Historic Preservation Commission, this is just a reformatting of the existing section. The existing section, I only had like the legislative part that enables the body, but it also had a lot of their rules and procedures kind of in one section, and we basically broke that apart into three. Development Review Committee, remove private utilities as members of the committee. This has kind of been problematic because when it was first established, some of the stuff that was on there, I believe, was like AT&amp;T, and then since then, we've had some other private utilities come onboard, and then they rarely attend the meetings, and so... And so having them as a signing member of DRC can be problematic. Uh, we also removed the requirement of electing a vice chair. Apparently, when DRC was set up, it was supposed to be set up similar to another committee, like Planning and Zoning, where you have a chair and a vice chair, and then the members all vote, and the consensus approves it. Uh, the way it actually works in practice is that each member of the committee signs off on it before it goes forward. And the reason for that is you wouldn't want a requirement that the utilities are placing on the project due to what their utility service is in the area to be overridden by everybody else by consensus vote. Uh, two one six is the Architectural View. That's a completely new section. It's set up very similar to DRC. This would be a process. Let me talk about the body first. Uh, basically, where we'll be two members from Community Development. One would be the city planner, and then another member from Community Development. And then having one, two, three, uh, architects or urban design professionals to serve as, uh, on that board. And that section just sort of kind of lists some of their requirements. The Stormwater Hearing Board, we're removing this board and adding the stormwater variance stuff to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Since I've been here in twenty fourteen, I believe it's only happened once. There's only been one, one meeting of the Stormwater Hearing Board to hear a case. So we think that with the guidance of the city engineer, they should be able, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals should be more than able to handle those requests. Moving on to administrative procedures. I'm sorry, I skipped tree advisory board. Uh, with this one, we just kind of, uh, some of the initial legislation that made that board exist wasn't included into the ordinance. And so we just sort of, for consistency, added the same requirements that we have for the other board as far as, uh, vacancies and, uh, composition qualifications appointment. Onto administrative procedures for rezonings, it was just a reformatting of the existing section. Conditional use was a reformatting. Variants reformatting the existing sections, added the variance request for sidewalks and stormwaters to that process. Uh, one thing we would like to add in here that we didn't include at this time was, uh, administrative adjustment clause in this section. In the transect districts as they currently are, uh, staff has the ability to vary dimensionally five percent before it triggers it as a variance. We are requesting that for transects, it increases from five to fifteen percent. And that, we also be given that power to do that in the other zones too. So say somebody's wanting or has a structure that's only violating the setback by six inches instead of triggering a whole variance request and going through the whole process, staff would have the ability to make that call. Next, site and infrastructure plan review. We've already had a site plan review. We do infrastructure plan review, but it wasn't necessarily defined in the code. And this is just, uh, setting up plan submission requirements. Uh, these regulations are already currently in the development checklist. We're just adding them to the code. Uh, we removed major and minor site plans as a definition, so to speak, because, you know, if it's getting reviewed by DRC, it's reviewed the same regardless if it's major or minor. Uh, we also added all the infrastructure requirements for subdivisions into this section. Architecture review, uh, one thing that we'd like to modify from the current version is two two five four BII. Uh, in there, we'd like to change the licensing requirements to match up with what currently is at the state. I think currently it says to be a licensed, a Mississippi licensed design professional. And we'd like to line that up with what the state requires, which I believe is a structure over five thousand feet requires an architectural stamp, so we just want to make sure everything lines up on that. Architecture review would be a process that can run either after DRC or while DRC is starting. Any project that comes through that triggers a site plan requirements, which is a thousand square feet of additional space or a modification to an existing building of fifty percent of value of the structure. And once you trigger, you know, a DRC, then you also trigger architecture review. And it doesn't, it only affects buildings that are, uh, are just easier to say what it doesn't affect. Doesn't affect single family or duplex, threeplex and up, and all commercial mixed use and stuff.
So single family attached, it doesn't affect? But it could affect single family attached, is that what you're saying?
If there's three, if there's three units being proposed, it would trigger.
Attached, not separate, not like three houses in a subdivision.
Correct. And they're set up, it would be set up really similar to DRC, except it'd be more of an as-needed basis. Uh, as soon as the applicant would, uh, present the proposed building plans, then the committee would meet to review as quickly as possible and give feedback as needed. Uh, and then once it gets to a point where it needs to be, approve it and allow the permitting to be issued if, uh, they've already got an approved site plan. Subdivision, um, we're creating a major and a minor subdivision process. A major subdivision process is similar to what we go through now. Uh, preliminary plat, final plat. A minor subdivision would be under one acre in size, split in it into no more than four lots, and you currently already have infrastructure. You're sitting on an existing road, you have existing utilities, you're just adding lot lines. In a minor subdivision process, we go through DRC review and approval, and then straight to the Board of Alderman. Condo plat, it was a reformatting of the existing section. The plat specifications and certifications, we, uh, just kind of added the certification for condo plats that didn't exist in the previous code. The historical preservation stuff, which is the designation of landmarks, landmark sites, historic districts, was just a reformatting. Certificate of appropriateness in historic districts was just a reformatting. Exceptions, variances, and administrative adjustments for transect districts. Exceptions will now, are being proposed, will need approval from the Board of Alderman. Currently, it is kind of a quirk in the code that exceptions that went for transect districts could, if approved, would stop at Planning and Zoning. It would never proceed on to the Board of Alderman. We're modifying that to be consistent with every other process we have where it ultimately comes through the Board of Alderman. And again, the administrative adjustment percentage being adjusted from five to fifteen percent. Not performing uses and developments. Uh, this section was a complete rewrite. We sort of used some model sections of other cities. Uh, there was some grammatical stuff that we had to correct in it. Building permit requirements, these are requirements that were requested by the building department based on how they actually write permits and what their experience is with the information that they receive. Certificates of occupancy requirements, we added language on temporary COs, which is something that kind of comes up quite often. And having it in the code and having some guidance on it would help. Enforcement penalties for violations, we changed the fine range from one hundred to five hundred plus court cost to one hundred to five thousand plus court cost. And from my understanding, this is ultimately at the discretion of the judge. It's just giving the judge a wider range for how he wants to choose as to pick the fine. Uh, you know, because five hundred dollars is a lot for somebody who did cut the grass, but it's probably not nearly enough for somebody who's dumping something on a property, you know, hazardous material. We added a action section, and what this basically does, it just shows sort of the process of how somebody would receive a summons to the court. Basically, a discovery, a verification of violation, a written notice, just kind of outlining exactly what the steps are to how you end up in court. And then we also included erosion control and the historic district penalties in this section. Now, if y'all have any specific questions, I'd love to answer.
Any questions from the board? Any specific questions from the board? Okay, all right, seeing none at this point, I'll open it as a public hearing, and then we'll come back to the board when we're done. So anyone wishing to speak about this item, in fact, at this point, we're going to have several public hearings, so I'm just going to leave it not a pro and a con. I'm just going to let, you know, if you want to come up and speak about this, uh, give us some input. If you looked at it thus far or have any thoughts, now would be, now would be a time. And there will be multiple public hearings. There'll be one at P and Z, and then we'll be having another one as well, so. And possibly more than that, so. Anyone wishing to speak about, about this item? Anyone wishing to speak about this item? Not at this point. All right, I'll close it as a public hearing. Board, anyone, anyone wishing to talk about it at this point in time? No?
Yeah. First of all, I commend the Community Development Department for, uh, making progress on putting, getting this before so we can begin to, to assess it and make some determinations on how we, we move forward. I would say that, that for me, the, the real question for this rewrite of, uh, sections one and two are, do we feel as a, uh, Community Development Department and as the, the Engineering Department and everybody that's involved, is this going to improve the process for, uh, how we administer things in the city and make the process for, uh, developers that are coming in, both big and small? Uh, is this going to be a, a, a serious improvement in terms of process? Um, my reading through it, it seems that, well, the primary thing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that this allows things that are maybe more user-friendly in terms of where they're to be located in the document. That seems to be a step in the right direction. Um, but some of the, the finer details are things that I think we certainly would like some input on. Um, I believe there's been discussion about, right now, if I, if I'm correct, is that anytime there's a, a subdivision or a replating, that triggers the sidewalk ordinance. Um, and I believe we're looking at language where, uh, that would potentially not be applicable to the, the person that might be selling the property, but may would, can you speak to, to that a little bit?
No, we had a discussion today, and it's not, we haven't really nailed anything down. We just have a general idea of a direction. We would like to kind of flush out and see if that would work. Uh, and what it is, is currently the ordinance is written, if you subdivide property, you trigger the sidewalk ordinance. And what it has done in practice is people who are subdividing property, uh, a variance case Mr. Josie had would be a prime example. He was subdividing commercial property just to sell. He wasn't planning on developing. And as the seller, he was going to be required to either bond or place the sidewalks on it. Uh, the idea that we're looking at is instead of the trigger being subdivision, the trigger being site plan review and infrastructure plan review. And then if you're subdividing some property, uh, say, for example, there are one part, one of the lots has a developed building currently on it, and then you're making three vacant lots. The three vacant lots would then not have to have sidewalks until they triggered by site plan review. The developed lot would have a sidewalk on it, because that's the time to put the sidewalk on. And then for residential, there was some, uh, I can't remember exactly what it was. The city engineer had some ideas on that, on how to offer some relief as far as, you know, whether to put sidewalks before or after the lots are subdivided.
And so from a, and I guess one of the questions that I have is from a process standpoint is while that language has not been refined or is not a part of the packet yet, I think it's certainly, I'm, I'm interested in reviewing that. And again, that may mean where we need multiple, uh, additional public hearings to, to think this through, because I think the, what I'm more interested, I'm certainly interested in us doing this in as timely a fashion as, as practical. But I also want to make sure that we, uh, iron out as many of the kinks in the process as, as possible before we... Uh, there's always going to be things in here that, that we don't find. That's just, that's just part of the...
When it, when it comes to that specific issue, the way I kind of see it handled is we would probably need to add some, some verbiage to the variance section, you know, about sidewalks in general for those situations we don't catch. And then as far as the, the meat of the sidewalk ordinance, that would be covered in section three.
And so I guess at our, at our next meeting is we'll have updated in language, uh, to address that?
Uh, yeah, for as far as in the variance section.
Um, I think the other, the other, to me, the other significant change is the establishment of the Architectural Review Committee. Um, and while I am, I'm absolutely think that is a, a reasonable step as our city continues to develop, to make sure we're looking at that. Um, I, I certainly would encourage all the, the Aldermen to take a good look at that, to see it. What do we think the outcome of this is going to be? And the practicality of, of the establishment of, of this in terms of, uh, finding the, the professionals that we're really going to be looking to pay and how those mechanisms are going to work, and just how that fits into the process. I certainly, um, it is certainly something new that would, uh, trigger an additional fee for the development community. Um, but I think, I, I'm okay with, uh, having an additional fee if the end result of what we're going to get is going to be something, um, that doesn't slow down the timeframe for what they're building, that runs concurrently. Um, and to hopefully make sure that we get more context-specific related, uh, uh, buildings that are going to fit the context and the character of the surroundings that, that they're in. And so I'm, I'm reading through that, and, and I would say that I, I like the direction, but I'm not yet sure of how that plays out. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, a little bit of input from maybe where we modeled some of this after might be able to, to help me understand that a little bit.
That, that was part of the issue when we were trying to find other communities in Mississippi, you know, based under Mississippi law, how they handled it. We're unique in the fact that we have a Development Review Committee. Most cities, the Board of Alderman approve every site plan and every building plan, every development plan. And with us, it stops at DRC. So we're adding another process that would also stop under the board. And every other process that's written in the state is written ultimately to end up at their Board of Alderman. Yeah, then some of the out-of-state stuff, like the really, really good ones, I mean, they, they spent a lot of money and effort studying every little individual area of the city and applying design standards on like almost a block-by-block basis.
Which is equivalent to certificate of appropriateness, how we administer the certificate of appropriateness with design standards.
Emily, you're hard to hear, so would you, no, no, that's okay. I'm just saying, when you, when you speak, go ahead and project, please, mail. Thank you. Okay, um, anything else in further?
No, I think, uh, again, I think it's a, as many of the dates, there's so many different timelines that people are going through from both the city standpoint and the developers, you know, got to have things in fourteen days or ten days. Um, I, I commend y'all for trying as best you can to, to get those to be as consistent as possible so, um, we have hopefully fewer mistakes in both advertising for when we need to advertise and for the, the timeframes for those coming in. So, uh, I, I'm hopeful that this is a, a, a good step in the right direction. And one of the things that, Mayor, that I think would be helpful for informing the public, because I think it's unlikely that most people are going to read an eighty-four-page document that is quite frankly, pretty uninspiring to read, is if, if there would be, if there would be a way for, um, us, for, for the city staff to maybe pull together something that's visual, that sort of highlights the, the major changes and, and what they've done in the, in the process, is something that make it more digestible for, for the development community and the, the general public to be able to give, hopefully informed, an opinion on how that would work. And I don't know what that looks like. Um, but I think something that just sort of highlights the, the big differences between existing and proposed and why what we're doing is, uh, should improve the, the process and hopefully the end products that we get.
Sure, and we might be able to have them do that at a, at a work session that we have as well, so. We'll have another opportunity to highlight that. And I want to, uh, we talk about this, you know, all the time, and, and so it's of use to go ahead and share it in a, in a public way, exactly what Alderman Walker said. But we certainly do not want to, to delay further our process. And, uh, we want to make sure that whatever we do, it runs concurrently so that we are not, uh, stringing the opportunity for people to develop and, and build in the community out further than it is already. But at the same time, we have things that we care about and that we want to make sure are, um, the character of the community that we want to develop. And, you know, there are things that, if somebody asked me, why are we doing this? And I said, well, you know, one of the things that I can just point to a building or two where it didn't measure to what we expected it to be. And so it's kind of like, I know it when I see it. It becomes harder to put it on paper and then effectuate it, so, um, that's one of the things. But we do want to be mindful of the, you know, time is money, particularly in the development community. So that is of, that is of some concern, so. Um, Alderman Miller, did, uh, did you, I, I'm sorry, I thought you...
Yeah, well, you must have felt me thinking.
I did, I guess.
Yeah, I will say, I, I think Architectural Review is, is, is going to be a, I personally think, um, it's going to be a huge positive for the city, and I think it, um, yeah. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the fee or, or any of that, and we got to cover our costs and, and do the things that we need to do. Uh, and in terms of the time and turning it around, um, we just need to find, and I, what Alderman Walker said, we, we just need to find a proper procedure and, and come to an agreement and, and, but also find a good balance of, of what we're going to do. Um, but I'm a huge proponent of, and, and y'all probably heard me say it, but it's our city and it ought to look the way we want it to look, and, and that is what I want to accomplish. And that's the expectation for me, uh, with the Architectural Review Board, so. Beyond that, thank y'all. I know that, um, you've still got a lot more writing to do and a lot of work to do in, in phase three, and, uh, commend y'all. And anytime I, I popped in City Hall, it's been kind of a madhouse in, in both y'all's offices. You know, papers everywhere, digging through books, but, um, uh, I see that, and, uh, thank you for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, and we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, and we will move to Mayor's Business, which is, uh, it was a presentation of Phase One and consideration of moving forward with Phase Two, the annexation study by Slaughter and Associates. We, he had a presentation that he made to us at the work session, and out of that, um, I think he, and it's in the, it's in the E packet, and I'm sure the board has had an opportunity to read the E packet, but it... to read the E-Packet, but it was the proposed area and some of the preliminary findings associated with the proposed area. I think from that, he made a fairly strong recommendation, which I had kind of gotten to the point of recognizing, is that if we were to take the entire study further, the entire area that was originally proposed, we would find ourselves in need of a new fire station and, which would be a truck, a fire station, and obviously personnel to go with it. And so his suggestion at this point in time was to eliminate that portion that would trigger that fire station and then move forward with the remainder of the study, which would be Phase 2. And that is what I would obviously like to see the board do. Since I started this, I wanted to make sure that I was on record saying how I would like it to proceed, but obviously it's the board's decision. So with, with that presentation, we have that, those numbers available, and the reference to the section that he was talking about was a sec, actually a section line. So I don't think there were any meets and bounds that went with it, so we just have to call it a section line as presented in the work session. If someone is interested in moving forward, I would, would like to see that happen. So any discussion from the board?
Mayor, may I recognize?
I saw Alderman Carver's hand first, please.
Just a question out in there Friday, in reading the articles, does this include Mississippi State University?
Yes.
And just, just some general questions I've had, any kind of student body population, they can't be included unless their registered voter is correct.
From a census standpoint?
Right, census standpoint.
Yeah, from a census standpoint, they don't have to be registered voters if it's, if it's part of the census.
So I guess I heard figures, I heard a figure of 30-plus thousand, I heard another figure of 38,000. So we're looking more towards the 38,000 mark if we?
Well, and it's going to depend. And that's going to be, you know, how much this, this, we cut this section line off, I don't know how many are in that because it's not part of one of those study areas. It will certainly be a portion. So I would say, realistically, I would say we'd be coming closer to 32, 33. But I don't know that for a fact, and we won't know until we get into that, the details in Phase 2.
And from a marketing standpoint and a market analysis standpoint, from restaurants and any other type, big box manufacturing, does that help us as a city to, is there a threshold, I've heard, you know, as we've done retail strategies, every 10,000, is that pretty incremental as far as being a big number to hit or?
Well, it does, and I've had a number of people who are not necessarily retail strategists, I haven't talked to them, but I have talked to Mr. Higgins, and anytime your numbers grow in that amount, you have to hit 30,000 as a target, target number for people who begin to look at you based on X amount. And so, yes, I think that it matters. And I've always thought that from our perspective, we continue to grow, others around us do not. And so I think my goal is for us to become the location in northeast Mississippi, virtually, where people want to be and where they come first and look first for their businesses, for their industry, for any of that. And so I think population matters for us, and it's, it is longer in my position that that census, which is why I was pushing for this as early, is to get to that 2020 census. If we're going to do this, then now is an opportune time.
I guess that's, I'm sorry, I guess that's, back to my original question, if it was a 38 figure that we're coming out to, I'd like to go and go for 40, but if you don't think that's viable at this point.
I don't think we can get there from here, Alderman. But I'd be willing to try if we could. But I want to make sure that we balance the cost to the benefit. And I think that the greater territory we take, obviously the greater cost to us from a general fund standpoint. We might gain some in terms of the ad valorem, but I don't think it will offset, and that's what this Phase 2 study will give us more information about, so.
Thank you.
All right, I heard Vice Mayor, I think, Vice Mayor, did I hear you a moment ago?
You did, am I recognized?
Okay, you're recognized.
And I have the floor. Thank you. Mayor, tell me exactly what, what Phase 1 consists of, I want to know the exact areas.
The exact areas, there was an area to the west?
Well, I mean, be specific. I mean, what are you talking about to the west?
There's a map, Vice Mayor. Joe, would you come up and put the map up, please?
If, when he does, I want, you, the mayor, tell us what's included, what's not included, what's going, give us, tell us about it. You know, we're not in a hurry to talk about this. You're trying to double the size of the city, tell us about it.
Well, Vice Mayor, to be honest, I don't have exactly road by road, but if Joe will pull a map up, I'd be happy to read it off to you.
Well, I want to know, what areas are you proposing to go into the city from all directions? That's my question.
Okay, there's the map up there. To the left, I mean, to the right, to your right, you'll see Sunset, you'll see the lakes, which is the apartment complex. So the red is the, is Area 1, and Area 2 is up at the top, and that is, as you and I have talked about, Call Your Road, that you were specifically interested in. And then to the east is Mississippi State, which is the crosshatch, that's Area 4. And then Area 3 is the remainder of the red that extends to, not, to Highland, Highland Village, Highland Estates, Highland Plantations, whatever it is out to the east there. And that's the part that would be cut off, that we're talking about from a section line that would be cut off and not included.
I believe it.
Yes, right there. So it would cut off that remainder there.
So, so are you proposing that Sunset is included in this, in this Plan 1? Is that what you're telling?
It is, it is included in the study area, yes.
Okay, so, oh, yes, action tonight by the board, that's what?
I'm asking for the board to approve going forward with Phase 2 for the study areas that would include all but the section line to the east.
Okay, so what is your recommendation as to Phase 1? What are you recommending as we move on for Phase 1 to be included?
I don't know until we get the numbers from the Phase 2 analysis.
So what specifically are you asking for? And I'm just making sure for clarity, I want to make sure we're on the same page. Tell me exactly what you're asking for, for Phase 2.
Phase 2 of the Slaughter and Associates report will be to analyze Area 1, Area 2, Area 3 as amended, and Area 4 to determine the impact on the city. Streets, what will have to be done, costs, sewage, water, all of those things that give us the detail of what the economic benefit and economic cost would be before we proceed any further.
Mayor, tell me exactly what is the rational basis to take in Mississippi State University?
The rational basis for me would be their population and the fact that they are between us and that additional area to the east, that's the area where we are growing, and that is an area that they are already partners with us in most things. And I think with the exception of Oxford and Ole Miss, every other university in the state is within the city limits of the city that is its partner. So I see no obstruction to that as long as they are willing, and they are still in talks with us about that, so.
Is Mississippi State in agreement to be brought within our corporate limits?
I'm sorry, I thought I just said that. They are in discussion with us, and we have not reached that. But that's the reason it's broken out separately, so that if they don't wish to do so, then we easily can reflect that in our annexation process.
If Mississippi State University is brought or annexed into the city, what are our legal duties and responsibilities, including infrastructure, roads, police protection, fire protection, utility services, and other related services?
That would be part of the annexation agreement. They wish to retain control over their police, over their streets, over their buildings as they do now. They wish to retain their, control of their landmass, and I personally have absolutely no problem with that, and I would write that into the annexation ordinance if the board was in agreement to do so.
So exactly, other than having the numbers, are you asking us to build any aspect of the infrastructure at Mississippi State?
No, sir, I am not.
So you're solely wanting us to annex it just from a number perspective and also, I guess, to, for the revenue aspect of it?
From a population perspective, and the only revenue associated with it that I think that we would gain from it would be 2% on the food and beverage sales.
And what is that existing on campus population, Mayor, as you recall?
Approximately 6,000, as I was told by their attorney.
Yo, this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, well, I've seen Alderman Vaughn, so let me get to him, and then I'll bring it back down to you, to Alderman, or Alderman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What is the rush on this? I noticed you've been pushing this ever since we've been elected. We ain't been elected a year. And what is the rush on this annexation?
I am interested in annexation in order to make the 2020 census, in order for us for the next 10 years to have that population that shows above 30,000, if we can do this. And it takes a couple of years to do it. So any rush that we have is still an 18-month to two-year process.
And then, did you look at all these, at the chart, the pie chart, where the city race composition of total population, 2010 city star annexation? Did you look at the pie chart when it got down to the black votes, that the black is going to dilute in existing city compared to the annexation study and the combined city annexation? All the black votes are diluted. Did you notice that?
I did. It was by about, what was it, a difference of about 1%, 1.5%?
Look like we all sometime or another try to make it better, better by trying to annex more instead of trying to take away, a little bit make it better, try to make the plan feel level, even a little stronger than we have instead of decreasing, instead of increasing. But I still, I still not understanding the root cause of why we're in such a big a hurry to come with a decision so soon. And that's what, that's what I'm wondering about. Why is the rush?
Alderman, Alderman Vaughn, are you, anything further?
Yes, I am.
Alderman Miller.
Which I've expressed in previous meetings, you know, my concerns, my biggest concern is the ability to properly provide city services like we should be doing. I'm very big on, I want to get the little stuff right. You know, I know we talk about a lot of big things when we get up here, but I certainly want to hear about how we're going to get the city services and do things like we're going to. I certainly don't disagree with Alderman Vaughn's point to the pie charts. It was something I noticed on, on Friday in looking at that, that I noticed that those numbers were down a little bit. But, but Mayor, we did start this process, and so, you know, I think it's something we ought to continue with Phase 2, and it's something that, I don't disagree is worth at least looking at, and we're obviously still working out the kinks. And like I said, I certainly want to hear a lot more, and I know that we're going to hear some of that in Phase 2. So with that being considered, I'd like to make the motion that we move forward with Phase 2, the annexation, annexation study by Slaughter and Associates.
Is that with the section line out of?
With the amended section line.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Any further discussion? Alderman Little.
I would just like to remind everyone that this is just a study. We're not about to annex anything tonight or next month. That it is just a study. And it's my understanding, Phase 2 from Slaughter and Associates' presentation on Friday, this portion of the study will let them basically get down in the weeds with the financial numbers and the financial impact and the drain it may have on the city taking on this additional population and square miles, and how we can support it, if we can support it. And that's, you know, I don't want this to get political or anything like that. I'm not sure that I'll support it when we get there. I want to see what the final product is and what their recommendation, that's why we've hired this group. Tell us if it's feasible, if it's not feasible. I understand, I think you told us at the work session Friday, Mayor, that you're going to be meeting with the representative from Mississippi State on February 22nd?
Yes, Chris, Mr. Latimer and I are meeting with them.
And I'm just thinking out loud, before we jump into that, should we wait to see what kind of feedback before we authorize them to move forward with Phase 2 until after that meeting to see, because depending on them studying that area, you know, what kind of impact that's going to have on it? I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, I think things that they are going to study are really, because we're not going to be taking Mississippi State's roads, we're not going to be taking their police, we don't have their water, we don't have their, I mean, we already have their sewer.
There's not much to study there.
There's not, there's not a whole lot to study out of that. And we can certainly pull them back after that 22nd meeting if it looks as though that that's not feasible.
And I get it that we will, if we can add those 6,000 students, that would be really big from the recruiting standpoint, based on our size, population, I'm not sure whether it would put us in comparison with other cities, but it would definitely shoot us out significantly and put us on the map with retailers further. That is a big area, and I've got concerns, but that's not my expertise, and that's why we're hiring these folks to come back to tell us what we should or shouldn't do, because I definitely don't want to bite off more than we can chew as, and be 20 years later trying to render services, city services to them.
Absolutely.
I'm very mindful of that going forward as well, so I am going to support this.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Alderman Carver, so your hand?
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, I've heard one time that we're one of only two or three cities in the SEC that weren't, university was not within the city limits. We'll just look into that another day and get back with me.
Sure, I'll be happy to.
And then, secondly, and this may be a question for the city attorney as well, what would be the benefit to the university? You know, they maintain all maintenance, correct? And then, I know it's early preliminary for that, but what's, what's the benefit for them?
Well, let me, let me say one thing about that, because I think it's very simple. They benefit, if we are, if we are larger, they are larger. It allows them to sell themselves better. It also gives them an opportunity to vote. I mean, they're part of the city and they're impacted by the city. So from my perspective, it gives them some say in the community in which they live, which makes sense to me. From a, from a policy perspective, I think the greater and stronger we are and they are together, and I think this marries us, that that's beneficial to all of us, because as they rise, we rise, and vice versa. So just from a standpoint of a policy and a political point, I think that we all win if the university were to choose to be part of us. MUW, well, back when, back in the day, MSCW is, was part of Columbus, and I called the Chief Administrative Officer of Columbus and asked him about it, you know, what did they have in place, did they have an ordinance, what did they have? He said, it's been so long and we've never had any issues, we've never had, you know, I don't even go back, I don't even know where the ordinance is that put MUW into the city of Columbus. But as I mentioned, everyone to Oxford is in their city limits, so.
So, I'm sorry.
From my perspective, I think it's a win-win for both of us, but, you know, that's up to them, and I'm certainly not going to make it an adversarial thing. If they don't want to be in and we can't make the case for it, then that's fine too.
So this would entail, if this passed, you'd have a 2020 census, and then immediately after, we'd have a re-division of wards to encompass. And then of those seven wards, is it one or two that would be minority-majority?
You'd still have, you'd still have that same. Right now, we've got two that were a strong majority, are a strong minority, and then, for example, Ms. Sistrunk's ward is almost 50/50.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
So just keep all that in mind.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'll say that I'll probably be, I will be in favor of this tonight. I think sometimes hearsay leads and leads into other discussions, and people think that it's happening, it's not happening. I know the ball is getting kicked down a little bit further, but this is a study that will lead into a lot of, a lot of other things, and I think we are becoming a destination city. I think that if this does pass in the long run, that the university and the city should come together and do some type of marketing plan, because we're a college town, but to go and actually combine as a college town, it would be the opportune time to do some type of marketing campaign. You see the partnership doing it and rebranding itself, but this would be a step forward where we both combine cohesively to come out and say, you know, we are the state's college town, so. Yet another thing, we can beat Oxford in.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, Alderman Sistrunk, did I see your hand?
I just wanted to say about the redistricting part of it in the 2020 census, it's highly likely that we will, we will redistrict anyway. We almost always have enough growth that the numbers get out of, out of the range that's acceptable. So that's probably something we do one way or the other.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second, and based on what I think is going to be a split vote here, we'll let the, if you would call, if you say yea or nay, the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. So I will get to Mr. Slaughter tomorrow morning. And you gentlemen are going to a ballgame without me, and I'm dressed for it. We will see you there. All right, thank you, and I do still have a quorum. Yes, I do. All right. All right, we have, let's see, one more, yes, one more item, the Finance Administration?
Three in all.
I'm sorry.
Three total.
Oh, HR, I'm sorry, you're right, Vice Mayor, you pulled a couple of them off the agenda, didn't you, all right, well, Finance Administration?
Same move.
A motion from Alderman, Alderman Walker.
Second.
Second from Alderman Little, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Motion carries, so by, by a vote of four to one, motion carries. Um, all right, item under Human Resources, item, um, three, authorization to advertise for a part-time receptionist for the Finance Administration.
May I recognize Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'm not against that, but I, I want to bring attention to it, hopefully, we will, the mayor and the board will address this in the future. I noticed that the position pays an hourly pay of $9 an hour, and it is my opinion that this hourly pay is not consistent with what other departments are paying for part-time employees. I noticed in three, at least two or three other matters that were brought forth tonight, where the part-time pay pays at least $10 per hour, and I further understand that perhaps that two existing, um, part-timers at this particular location, one may be making a little bit more than $9 an hour, and another one's making maybe $9 an hour, but I would like to see some type of consideration to be given in the future, so there can be some type of equitable adjustment to these persons who are making this $9 an hour. Of course, I do not recall these positions being included in the overall pay plan that provides the $10 per hour pay as was provided for sanitation and some of the other skilled laborers, but hopefully, you know, in the future, that we would look at bringing these persons who this is equally important on our payroll to at least $10 an hour. So, that was my purpose for taking off the agenda tonight, so hopefully, Mayor, if you would perhaps just study this and consult with your Honorable Budget Chairperson and staff to see what's the likelihood of, maybe, in event that there's another vacancy, that this can come forward at that minimum $10 an hour rate. With that discussion being said, may I move approval of this particular matter?
All right, I have a motion from Vice Mayor for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Little, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Right, motion carries, four to, four to one, we're dwindling here.
The four to one, who's going?
He's, he's back.
Oh.
I'm sorry, no, if there was not, not, we were, we were missing, yeah, four to zero.
Can I be recognized next, item, Mayor?
Uh, yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, I'm not opposed to the director of getting this, getting a 10% increase, that certainly would be consistent, and I bring this to the attention of the board just to inform the board, I'm sure that, you know, the board is, is already aware of this, just want to make sure that this is what we want to do, but this is not, nothing, I want to be very consistent with what I want to do, and I do not oppose this for our interim director, but it's to my recollection, Mr. Ashford, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and let me ask you this question, Mr. Ashford, I just want to make sure the board is aware of this, I'm not opposed to this increase, just on the one specific question, Mr. Ashford. As we get ready to talk about this 10% pay increase for our interim director of Parks and Recreation, which I have no problem with, for consistency purposes, my one specific question, I just want you to answer this question, is yes or no. Does this position, or will this person that we're, that's the subject matter of this, this particular item on the agenda at this time, has this person already been approved for a salary adjustment under the Phase Two of the salary adjustment plan that was recently approved by the board?
Yes, sir.
Am I further correct that this person would also be receiving a salary adjustment of at least $1,500?
Yes, sir.
As part of the Phase Two? Mayor, I have no problem with the 10% pay increase, but I'm just not in favor of a 10% plus a $1,500, $1,500 pay increase, I, I think that would be outside the realm of consistency. Now, you know, I think if the board wants to look at that, at that increase on down the road, I think that'd be good, but 10% is what we have given and done for other department heads and other persons similar situated. I'm not aware of what we have given up, a 10% increase, and then come back and give up another adjustment just this quick, this is the second, second month, and eight months later, we are giving this, this adjustment, so, um, Mayor, I don't, I'm not trying to make this controversial, but I, I just want to be specific, what I would like to do, and I want to be on record opposing this increase, which I'm not, but I would like to see, Mayor, what the thought process, just very quickly, I mean, I'm not, this is something, you know, not going to hold the night up on, but I would prefer just giving the 10% increase and no, and no adjustment on, on the October, you know, we can always come back if you want to recommend that at some point later beyond October. I think it's very generous for us to give a 10% increase tonight, and then another 15% in, in October, that's not what we have consistently done, we have a very strong and healthy record where we just give them the 10%, so, Mayor, just tell me, I mean, so I can move on, I mean, but I'm not in favor, I'm okay with the 10%, but I'm not in favor of 10% plus, plus another increase in October.
Okay, all right, thank you, you're yielding.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Sistrunk, I saw your hand.
I, I did want to be sure that this is a position where that additional raise as part of our payroll compensation analysis doesn't take place until later into the summer, is that, that's correct?
It's in October, yes, ma'am.
So, there's every possibility that we will have advertised and filled that position before Phase Two gets implemented, and it is consistent with what we did with Mr. Ware, to give an interim raise.
With 10%?
While we're, while they're assuming those interim duties, so, I, I understand your point, I take your point, but they, they really diverge because it's months before that additional $1,500 will be paid, and I really anticipate that we will be into the process of hiring somebody before, before that takes place.
Mayor, I'm thinking to simplify, although, we're finishing where everybody stands, so make this motion. I move that, that the board approve the 10% pay increase as outlined on the handout that was given by our Human Resource Officer, and that the board does not grant the pay increase that has been authorized for Phase Two for this particular employee effective October of 2018, so that's my motion, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and is that, let me get a little clarification for myself, Vice Mayor.
I'll be real clear, I'm, my motion is very clear, it is to approve the temporary pay increase for the interim director of Parks and Recreation as presented, which is 10%, and that the board does not grant this employee the salary adjustment as outlined, and approve for the position for the October 2018 time period.
Okay, so, employee-driven as opposed to position-driven, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yes, ma'am, employee-driven.
Yes, thank you, all right, do I have?
I just have a clarifying question.
Okay. Alderman Walker.
All right, so if we get this 10% for the interim, whatever that number ends up being, and between now and October, we advertise, we hire to fill that role permanently, this employee, if they go back in their, in their current position, they forfeit that interim money?
No.
Is that how that would work?
No.
So, you would stay, you stay at the interim, at the, whatever, if you're in that position and you're no longer acting as the director, then what happens to that salary?
Previously, if you're in an interim position and if the position is filled, the payroll would change within that next pay period, and so, he would lose that 10% because we changed that within the next pay period. So, if he is not selected as interim and we hire somebody else, he would go back to his original salary in the next pay period.
And so, at that point, then the $1,500 potentially comes back into play for the salary adjustment.
In October.
Right.
Yes.
Mayor, let me be clear on that, be clear on that, no, 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 what we're saying tonight is real simple, we're getting this complicated, what we're saying is that he, we give him a 10% pay increase, but he does not get the additional salary as director, if he's, you know, if he's director. Now, of course, if he does not get the director, then that salary will still be with that position, and my motion is just to say that if he's director, if he gets the director, I'll make that real clear, for everybody to be real clear, if he's director, gentleman from four, he gets 10%, okay? And then, and then, gentlemen, if he continues to be director, October one, I want to be real clear, that he gets no further increase, however, now, if he's not a director, he'll, he'll get that, he'll get that, that, that adjustment that, that the policy allows.
Yeah, no, I'm, okay, I was, I was unclear on that, I didn't, assuming that we were saying that he would be in that position, I believe this.
I'm still, I'm still in need of a second.
Well, I, I think, again, so, clarifying point, I think this was a discussion that was had when we passed the, the salary adjustment, would be that if there were a position to become available, then, and that position is open, then that salary adjustment is essentially null and void, that you would be looking at that, whoever the candidates are, and you would be paying them based on whatever the market value of that would be, so, in my mind, that becomes a moot point, and whether that's going to be less than that $1,500 or more, to me, that's going to be candidate-dependent.
Okay, I need a second, folks, before we move along, a second, a second, no, motion dies for failure of a second. Okay, we're open for a motion, Alderman, Alderman Sistrunk.
I move that we grant a temporary pay increase for the interim director of Park and Recre, Parks and Recreation as described in our E-Packet.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Little, any further discussion?
May I be recognized, Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I certainly want the record to be clear, because we speak through our minutes and our minutes only, and not based on no interpretations later, but on our minutes, I certainly am not in favor, against the gentleman from getting a 10% pay increase, but given the motion that's before this body, it leaves the door open for there to be some type of interpretation that if, say, a person is still in this position, then that person may be perhaps eligible for that additional adjustment. And only for that reason that I'm going to vote against this motion, the, the motion is very unclear, it's very, well, it's very, it's clear, but it's very ambiguous and very vague and broad, because it allows for an interpretation to be come back in October, and I think at least the door open for the position in the person to get that amount, because my recollection, the Phase Two mentions this person's name, to my recollection, on that gold-printed sheet that we got some weeks ago. I mean, I think I'm very correct on that, it mentions the, the name, so I think what the board is going to do with this motion, the intent is going to be, and maybe I'm wrong, the intent is going to be to give this 10% tonight and come back with this additional salary adjustment, you know, but if we have that kind of money in the city, just, just pay it, but I'm not going to vote for it, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, so let's do, let's do a roll call, please call yea or answer yea or nay, is the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four to three, the motion carries, I'm sorry, four to one, can't count either, sorry, thank you. Good thing I've got him right in my left hand over here. All right, I believe that concludes all of our regular agenda items, we will now go into, well, I need a motion to go into closed session, I have a motion to go into closed session from Alderman Little, do I have a second? Everybody wants to go into closed session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, second from Alderman Walker, any further discussion? All right, we'll go into closed session to determine the need for executive session, if we could, please clear the room, and I'll make a call for it once the decision is made.